Good evening.
Good evening.
We'd like to convene the Board of Education, open session at 7:06 PM. Also like to receive our pledge of allegiance from Clifton Middle School.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Administration, and Monrovia Community. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and to introduce two amazing students who are going to lead you through the pledge and talk a little bit about some awesome things that are happening on our school campus. I would like to introduce Natalie Nash and Courtney Spilker.
All right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Natalie, and I'm going to be leading you in the pledge of allegiance. So, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. So now, I will be talking to you all about our canine therapy group and our Kids for Animals Clubs at Clifton. To start off, the canine therapy program brings dogs into classrooms on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I witnessed it firsthand, and you can just tell how the room lights up when the dog enters. Everyone starts smiling and laughing, and all the tension in the room is released. All the student's stress eases away, and they all gently pet the dog with care, which leads us into our next group called the Kids for Animals Club. This club is run by our teacher, Ms. Porter, and it inspires children to do more for animals. It helps informed students of how to help animals in need and make trips to the Pasadena Humane Society to visit our furry friends. Their main purpose is to help educate students on how to handle animals in the wildlife and in their home. And their also purpose is to share their knowledge with others so that we can all help animals in different ways. Everyone in that group wants to properly care for animals and help others do so as well. Both groups are a great way for animals and for the people to interact with each other and be more comfortable with one another. And here's Courtney.
Thank you, Natalie. So today, I'm going to inform you about our MTV Awards that we have at Clifton. Currently, our leadership program has been working on getting ready for one of the most biggest events of the year, the MTV Awards. MTV stands for Motivational Teen Victories. This academic rally recognizes students for their amazing accomplishments. Not only do we recognize them for their academic achievements, but we also recognize them for how involved they are in our school. And much more. As some of you may know, our MTV Awards are a huge hit, but this year, we've decided to slightly take a different slight path. This year, we have chosen to focus more on character awards such as positivity, kindness, and perseverance, instead of just academics alone. Renaissance Leadership has decided to do this to recognize students who are making a positive impact on our school culture. In the past year, we've done multiple different types of awards, which has included the 4.0 GPA students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, scholar athletes, comeback Cubs, and students who will work hard in school. We also give our Cubs Awards for being role models in an award known as CPR Rock Stars. We are looking forward to making students at our school hyped up and honored for their many accomplishments. And finally, thank you for everything you do for Clifton.
We have some goodies for everybody.
Oh, amazing. Mrs. Jackson, Natalie, and Courtney rocks, as usual. Bring the goodies, that's how you hit it.
Is this a bribe?
Yep.
Natalie.
Good evening. Yeah, it's on TV. The Board has an affectionate way of showing their love and a way of lowering my chair. That's how we've rolled for the last five years. May the force be with you, Mr. Hammond. Okay, let's move forward, guys. Maritza, Lee, y'all better get ready. Next, we'll have our roll call. Obviously, we're all in attendance. Next, we have our order of business, agenda, discussion, presentation items, which could be input, representative, or change. Dr. Rosie, we have anything that we need to entertain?
We do. We will be moving our student board member report to follow our approval of minutes, and we will be moving consent item three, individual services agreements, to action and to be added as the last action item in Ed Services.
Received. Like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting from the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Huff?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Rich?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Now, we're at our public comments. These are items that we encourage the public to participate, invite you to share your views. Hopefully, if you already filled out a card, with that said, Ms. Huff, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Prior to that, could we have our student board member report?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, President Williams.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Terosian and Cabinet. I would first like to thank Mr. Chris Rich and Terrence Williams for their years of dedicated service to our school, our district, and our community. You will both be truly missed, and we wish you only the best in your endeavors.
Thank you.
We know that you will not be far, and that you will continue to be involved in improving the quality of education we have grown to expect in the Monrovia Unified School District, and that you will achieve a success wherever the next phase of your career in public service takes you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I am pleased to report that Canyon Oaks High School and Mountain Park School held their annual Thanksgiving feast on Friday, November sixteenth. Our student body enjoyed the meal prepared by our staff alongside members of the Board and Executive Cabinet, who were present as well. Next Wednesday, we will embark on a school-wide field trip in which we will transport the trouts that have been bred in Mistonized Biology class. We are proud to announce the completion of a painting of our school done by Mrs. Shannon Fitz along with students, no, excuse me, Mrs. Shannon Fitzpatrick, along with students, Talina Montez Valley, apologies if I butcher your last name, and Alina Arkenberg. We are anxious to see how the canvas will light up this boardroom very soon. And lastly, our basketball team won their two games, and we look forward to starting our softball season next month. Thank you, and I hope you all have a safe, healthy, and enjoyable holiday season.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
Is your parents in the audience this evening? Your parents here? Okay. I just want to compliment him, man, you're a sharp cookie. I know the first time he came here, and I saw his mother and father in the audience in the first day, they said, "He just wanted him to stand there and breathe." And look how far you've come in two board meetings, so God bless you, man. Keep it up. As I mentioned earlier, we have public comments we want to entertain before I rudely interrupt our student board report. Again, Ms. Huff, do we have public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Board President Williams, I'd like to invite Kevin and Darla Sales to the podium.
Please come to the podium. Don't be shy, you already wrote your name down.
All right, now, moving on.
Okay. Maybe she was here for you, Chris. Do we have any other public comments?
There are none.
Okay. We have any public comments for items on the open session agenda?
There are none.
Any public comments for items on the closed session agenda?
I'm sorry, let me go back. There are two public comments for items on the open session agenda. They'll be entertained at item number F two? Two and three.
F two and three. So it is. All right, thank you for the acknowledgement, Ms. Huff. Moving to our recognition, the Board of Education would like to congratulate Mr. M. in the Monrovia High School Awesome Marching Band on winning the SCS BOA Division One A Field Championship. Mr. Luhon, can you entertain us, please?
I can, actually.
I know. That was not a joke.
I didn't bring the orchestra, so it'll be, actually, they're here. I don't know if their instruments are here. Thank you, Board of Education, District Administration, Community of Monrovia. As you know, Monrovia High School is celebrating its 125th birthday this year. It's amazing that after 125 years, we still have room for some firsts. And tonight, we get to celebrate a first. After 125 years, we have a championship marching band. It's my, it's my pleasure to introduce our band director, Daniel Magianis.
Thanks. I was given an assignment to try to sort out all the certificates of kids who are actually here. There are some other activities going on tonight, like a vigil for Ms. Mesa.
Right.
And yeah, she was a good friend to a lot of us. We're dedicating part of her performance on Monday night at our spring concert to her, so, in her memory. Hi, and welcome, and thank you so much, Doc and Board. Yeah, we had an excellent year this year. I started off the year with them realizing that this was also the youngest marching band we've ever had. We graduated 25 seniors last year and only had nine seniors this year. My entire trumpet section is freshmen and sophomores. I have zero seniors in the brass section. It was just a really young band, but what they did really well was work. They were dedicated, they put in a lot of time on their own after school, in groups, in sections, in small ensembles. They worked really hard, and they got better and better throughout the year. Our production this year was entitled Remix de Lune. It was a modernized band rendition of Debussy's Clair de Lune portrayed in, you know, modern classical, straight-up jazz, waltz, even like a little hip-hop section of Clair de Lune. And we were not undefeated this year. We went to four, or sorry, five regional competitions with the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association. That's the oldest and probably the most commensurate to CIF in the band world. We took first place four out of five times, and honestly, we were actually almost happiest the time we came in third because we knew who we were competing against that day. That day, we were competing against Taft Charter and Charter Oak and Newberry Park and all the really big names in our Division One A. And even though we came in third, our score jumped up that day, and we were less than a point away, or two points away from first place, right in the, with these groups that were at the top of the grid. There were 75 One A bands competing this year. Of those, 34 were in contention for championships. The top 12, based on their best three scores, advanced to championship finals, which were November 17th at Downey High School. And we went in ranked second out of those 75 or 34, and finally, the top 12. And we had an amazing marching day that day. Visual performance scores were the top. Our percussion took high percussion, meaning the best drum line in competition at championships. Our color guard missed high color guard by like a point. They're little, they want it back, but they did really, they really, really did really well. And they, each of our ensembles, you know, took that, like a sweepstakes award sometime throughout the rehearsal, sometime throughout, and finally, band just was, came out on top. And it was an amazing feeling after months and months and months of work, a lot of, you know, time and money and other resources just spent on this. Yeah, I'm beside myself, and when I saw it, my staff was, I said, "Oh, my God, I might cry." And one of my staff members was like, "Yeah, do it, do it, do it." And she kept, she had her cellphone out, she was ready to try to get it, go, "No." And honestly, I was holding it together, I mean, I opened up the recap, I saw the scores, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh. Oh, my, oh, wow." And okay, keep, I don't want the kids to be able to see this because this is before the announcement. And I look at them, I tell them, we double-check the scores, and, you know, I call my wife, I waited, called my wife until they were about to announce, you know, first place. I held it, and she even had me on, you know, my staff member was trying to get me to cry. It wasn't until I was walking across the field, because the top three bands are invited to retreat onto the field for the medals. Each of them, you'll see, are wearing their gold medals. And yeah, they each got a gold medal. I even got one. But when I saw them running down, just overjoyed or just unbelieving, that's when I almost lost it. That's really when, because it wasn't about, you know, opening a score, or it wasn't even about the show. It was always about them. And that's when I realized they were my champions, they're my heroes. They did so well. Thank you, guys, for having such a, have a wonderful year. I'll be calling each one of them up individually. Unfortunately, I was given an assignment of trying to sort out who's here and who's not. Several of them were coming in later, so I'm going to have to try to pull who's not here. So I'll start off who I knew was here. In alphabetical order-ish, we're going to start off with ninth-grade color guard member, Alyssa Batista. By the way, band and orchestra, band, if you guys could try to put yourself in last-name alphabetical order, it'll make this a lot easier. You know, Reyes go to the backs, Sora go to the back, and, hi, Alyssa. Hi, congratulations. Are we collecting them up here? Yeah, so here we go, and just go.
Show, show, Mr. Hough.
Alexis Bachman, Buchanan, sorry, Alexis Buchanan. Thanks, that'll work better this way. Asia Cruz. No, this, this one, that's this one. Oh, yeah, sorry, you're right. I got it, I see it. Michael Allen. This is awkward. Just put it right there, I'll call him. Nathaniel Anderson. Gabriel Banuelos. We're a little out of sync, but I'm trying to keep it moving. Our drum major, hold on, I'm going to wait for this one. Our drum major, David Bachman.
What up, David?
Go Bachman.
Go, David.
Janlu Kaldito. Our low brass caption, sorry, our low brass captain, Jason Camerano. Did Cooper make it yet? Nope. He's not here yet. Sir? Ty Daffren. Beatrice Garcia. Brandon Harbert. And Ashley Jimenez, I'm going to call them both up together because. Because. You can wait for her. Our drum captain, Benjamin Jimenez. Kyla Keys. Assistant drum major, David Loera. Olivia Moran. Ethan Nordahl. Ethan, are you here? I saw Eric. No, Ethan? Okay. Jesse Ocampo. Xavier Radillo. Conrad Reinhardt. Gabriel Reyes. Yahir Santiago. Quatomoke Steven Silva. Nicolena Anjali Schultz. Sorry, that's what it says. Leandra Shelton. Amir Sora. Drew Story. Matthew Temes. Go to the other side. Or start doubling up or something, Mike. Maddie Williams. There's more here that are just not. Leave this part open because I got to see. Phoebe Yee. This is where it gets really interesting because, nope, that's okay. I got to find the ones that are here because. Jun Yu Zhang. Sorry, Mark. Yeah, I have a lot more kids showing up from the vigil, so. I'm just going to call them, and I'll give you guys your certificates later. Kristy, Kristy Zhang. Color guard co-captain, Alyssa De La O. Color guard captain, Raven. That's why I needed. McDonald, Raven McDonald. Sorry. Our featured melaphone soloist, Giselle Morales. Yeah. Andrea Martinez. Carla Garcia. Once again, Ethan Nordahl. Is this, last but not least, James Rodriguez. Don't, I'm going to have to pass them all up anyway. Sir? Yeah, this is them, they did an amazing job. I'm missing at least another third of the band in color guard, but. Oh, I'm missing again another third of the color guard not be able to join us tonight, but your Monrovia High School Marching Wildcats band in color guard, 2018 champions. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing. We would like to present to Dr. Terosian a gold medal. Monrovia High School Marching Wildcats band in color guard, SCS BOA One A Championships. There you go. That was Charter Oak came in second, and Taft Charter came in third. Yeah. They were the ones that beat us at Rampage, at Heart Rampage, so.
That's awesome. Isn't that great?
It's always great to be champion.
Right. A room full of champions, you got to love that.
They don't have names on the outside, so.
All right, we're good, guys, we're going to gather again, right here, down in front.
Great.
Hi, Chris. How are you? Nice to see you, buddy.
You too. Have fun at the championship.
Oh, my God, I can't wait.
Oh, it's going to be crazy.
Soccer?
Anything?
Oh, Vikings?
No, soccer.
That was back in the day, you guys, sports.
Right.
You play basketball.
You play basketball.
That's right, wrestling.
Hey, Charles.
Jealous?
No.
Evelyn.
Great.
Great.
That's great.
I'm just gonna call them and I'll give you guys your certificates later. Kristi. Kristi Zhang. Color Guard co-captain Alyssa De La O. Color Guard captain Raven... That's why I need a... McDonald. Raven McDonald. Sorry. Our featured melaphone soloist Giselle Morales. Yeah. Andrea Martinez. Carla Garcia. Once again, Ethan Nordahl. Is this last but not least? James Rodriguez. Don't worry, I'm gonna have to pass them all up anyway. Sir? Yeah, this is them. They did an amazing job. I'm missing at least another third of the band in Color Guard, but... Oh, I'm missing again another third of the Color Guard not be able to join us tonight, but you're Monrovia High School Marching Wildcats band in Color Guard. 2018 champions. Oh, and I'm sorry. One last thing. We would like to present to Dr. Cherosian a gold medal. Monrovia High School Marching Wildcats band in Color Guard, SCSPO A1A Championships. There you go. That was Charter Oak came in second and Taft Charter came in third. They were the ones that beat us at Rampage, at Heart Rampage, so...
That's awesome.
Isn't that great?
It's always great to be champion.
Right. A room full of champions. You gotta love that.
Hi, Chris. How are you? Nice to see you, buddy, too. Have fun at the championship. Oh, my God. I can't wait. Oh, it's gonna be crazy.
Evelyn.
Congrats, man.
We do have the video. We need to send this shot to the video of our performance.
Charles, shoot a panorama. I'll fix it for you. Shoot a panorama. I'll fix it for you. Panorama. No, panorama. Like, did you overlap? Do that. I took charge.
Oh, I know what you're saying. But I need help.
My computers have read 2018. All the other ones have read 2019.
They're not?
They're not yet.
Oh, okay.
But I need an organization to set up 26 monitors in the room.
Okay. I thought Don was going to...
Yeah, but now we're on 2017.
Oh, it's supposed to be 2018.
I know what it means to me, but I looked at my kids' screens and I wanted to see if it would be before.
Okay, alright.
So, you might as well do it on vacation. Then I'll have 26 more up.
Okay, alright. Of your... Oh, I could do that, yes. No problem.
Chris is coming.
Check this shot. She's sitting around the choir.
Sarah Nushin's, the heart, the art.
Music, music.
Ladies and gentlemen, we want to continue our recognition, which includes a Monrovia Unified School District. We'd like to thank board member Chris Rich. I'm not sure, are we there? Ms. Huff, are we there?
You know, we have a couple people who would like to express some sentiments for both of you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna start with Dr. Zamarepa. And he's got a group with him who he'll introduce.
Thank you. So making their way up to the front is this year's brand-new Santa Fe Cougar Choir under the direction of Ms. Sarah Nush Sukiyashian. She has worked previously in our elementary schools, and we're so excited that we're able to have her for one period every morning. We had our big Christmas performance last night, and so we are missing some of our choir, but we're excited that we have some of our Cougar singers here with us this evening to give... Tonight's a big night. We want to give a send-off as we welcome our two board members here, Mrs. Lockerbie and Mrs. Travanti. We also want to say thank you, Mr. Rich, and thank you to our true-blue Santa Fe Cougar scholar, Mr. Terrence Williams, for his undying support of our school and our community. Thank you both for what you have done for our service, and away we go with a little holiday cheer, and welcome to our two new board members.
I understand, Mr. Luhon, did you have...
Hi, everyone. I'm back.
Sing, Lou.
No. Not yet. Maybe Friday. So... As a representative of the high school, it gives me great pleasure to recognize both Chris Rich and Terrence Williams, what they've meant to our high school, what they've meant to our community, and just to say an honest and a deeply felt thank you for your undying commitment to our kids. Chris, you've been a technical advisor, as well as a confidant. The work that you did to help us develop the stadium, our graduation ceremonies, and always been very gracious in giving of your skills. Thank you. And Terrence, you and I go back. Football fields and conversations about toe-tapping in the end zone and... It's really a joy to hear you and hear your voice on Thursday afternoons and Friday nights, and I know that you're gonna be a continued presence at our high school, and we want to thank you. We have a small gift for the two of you just to say thank you so much for your dedication to our school. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
We also have with us Kristi Lopez from Senator Anthony Portantino's office.
Hi, good evening. As stated, my name is Kristi Lopez, and I'm the district representative for state Senator Anthony Portantino, and have the distinct honor of representing him in the community of Monrovia. I'm here today to express his gratitude to the both of you for your many years of leadership and service. As I was thinking about what I was gonna say and how I was going to say it, I am kind of just struck by your student representative, and so I don't think that I could state it any more eloquently than he did or with so much poise. And so with that, I'm going to say, on behalf of Senator Anthony Portantino, ditto. I do have one little difference than his presentation, is I do have two certificates of recognition to give the both of you guys to commemorate your many years of service. You guys have done a lot for this community, so I know that these two certificates are probably just going to be added to the very many that you already have on your walls. And for some, there might be an Emmy. You can put it next to that if you want to.
Chris has got an Emmy.
No, yes. So with that, it is my distinct honor and pleasure, on behalf of state Senator Anthony Portantino, to present you with these two parting gifts. I do know that I will most likely see y'all in the community, so I look forward to that. But with that, on behalf of Anthony and the entire state of California, congratulations and thank you for everything and every impact that you've made positively in students' lives in the city of Monrovia.
Okay. I have the pleasure of acknowledging this individual, who I consider a personal friend, very close friend. I share that with all four of these in my... Mr. Rich, will you come up, please, so I can put on my glasses and read this stuff for you? Mr. Luhon was modest in his words regarding Chris and what he does for the community. If you didn't know, Chris is a Grammy Award-winning producer. Emmy, excuse me. If you didn't know, Chris is an Emmy Award... No, Chris has an Emmy on his desk at home. He shared it with us. It's so heavy. Chris works for the... Which station you working for? He works for CBS. What's the show called? No, just kidding. He works for CBS. He's a producer for The Talk. So if anybody looking for any tickets, he's right behind me. No, but sincerely, I want to read this wonderful acknowledgement here. And it reads, "Chris Rich, in appreciation of his years of service to the staff and the students of Monrovia Unified School District, and his dated June 2016 to December 2018." And Chris, this reads pretty much the same, but I'm gonna read it because I have it in front of me. "In appreciation of your service to the staff and students of the Monrovia Unified School District, the same dates were acknowledged." Congratulations, my friend.
Is that your photo?
Yeah.
I thought you photoshopped me, didn't you?
No. Okay, Mr. Goodland, are you coming up? This is my last president appeal to you. Hurry up, Ed. No, I want you to come and just prepare. Chris, go ahead and face up, bro.
Okay, alright. I will. You come on up, Ed. It's my second time here in this position. Five years ago, I was here. It's never really goodbye, is it? It's only until we meet again. See you later. See you soon. Thank you all very much for the kind words and for the work you do. Two and a half years ago, I heard a rumor through the Monrovia grapevine that Alex Zuko would be vacating her seat on the board, and not long after that, I received a phone call from Mr. Hammond. He was representative for the board at that time, and asked if I would be willing to serve in that capacity to fill that seat. I think I thought about it for a few seconds. Not long. It is an honor to serve this community. It always has been. It always will be. Like I said, it's never really goodbye. I'm nearby. I still have some unfinished business that I'll be hanging around to take care of. Please call on me, and it's a pleasure to be a servant in this unique community. It's unique because, like Terrence said, we're all friends. I don't think it happens very many places where colleagues can refer to themselves as friends. And I mean that for all of you gentlemen and all the rest of you here who I work with on a regular basis. It's a pleasure to call you a friend. And everyone else who works in this district. You're so dedicated. It's an amazing community. I'm happy to be here. I've lived here for 25 years. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. Thanks to my family for putting up with my crazy schedule and my crazy life. And thank you all, so I'll see you again soon. and thank you all. So I'll see you again soon.
Get all my stuff, Ed.
Just on behalf of the board, Chris, thank you so much for all you've done. It's just amazing the variety of backgrounds our board has and has had different people on it with different backgrounds. And I tell you, Mr. Rich and his background and Sam has just provided invaluable service in upgrading our sound systems across the district, and he's done a lot of extra work to make sure our students have the best that we can provide. And thank you, Chris, for all that. Having said that, I want to recognize Mr. Williams over here. First of all, for his years of service to the staff and students of Monrovia Unified School District, this is dated December 2013 to December 2018. Terrence, thank you so much. As we had the background on sound over there, we've had the background over here on sports and high school students and special ed and all the special things that Mr. Williams does, plus his community service. Terrence, you've just been a bright spot in this district and in this community for so long. I just want to thank you for all that you do and all you've done for the last five years. Been a pleasure to serve with you, and if you look at the progress our schools have made, I think that you certainly have made a difference in this community and in this district. And now I would like to present you with this plaque in great appreciation to Terrence Williams, who served as president of the Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education from December 2017 to December 2018. And I know that's not always an easy job, and we appreciate all the extra work you put into it and the way you led this board for the last year through some very difficult things. And just want to say thank you so much, Terrence. Great job. I believe before we let Mr. Williams have a few words, I believe some other board members wanted to say order two. Rob?
When we are so fortunate to get these positions in our community, our families are the ones who pay a huge price for the time that we're gone. I see Neil over here right now, and Neil, will you take a picture of Maritza? Because she's going to be gone for the next four years. But it's our families, you know, they're in it at the same time with us. And Bobby is here, and so is Sam. Terrence is... Can you stand up? That's Sam, and where's Bobby? There's Bobby up front. When the family member is serving, the family at home is serving as well, and thank you so very, very much. Chris, I think the answer to the question I had of would you come back took maybe two seconds for you to answer. His first comment was, "I need to check with Caprice, his wife," because that's the commitment. And I think she took less time to answer his question, which was if that's what you'd like to do. And then we got Chris Rich back. A solid person, a good friend, loyal to every student in this district. His first thought and concern is how's it going to affect the students in our schools? So they are the beneficiary of his service. Thank you, Chris. On Terrence, T and I, it has been a real pleasure, my friend. There's a lot of late nights when you're elected, Celine. And the Brown Act restricts how we can talk to each other. So you're allowed to talk to one other person on the board, and sometimes you have to pick and choose who that person is going to be. And a lot of those nights, it was Terrence and I that were having a discussion about something that had to be done and how we would approach it. And I will truly miss those telephone calls. I will truly miss the conversations. I will truly miss how you worked so hard, so long, behind the scenes to get this job done, because you did it to the absolute best of your ability, and we were the benefactor of all that. Thank you from the bottom of my heart as a resident here and as a board member. You were tops. Thank you.
So five years ago, I was in where Ed is standing right now as the incoming president, as I knew our board members were going to be leaving. And so I put a lot of time and effort into thinking what I was going to say about Chris. And so I'm not falling into that trap again, because this is a small community, and we all do this for the same reason, because we enjoy each other's company. We enjoy the work that we're doing, and you never really leave. I can guarantee you, the next time I'm walking around the football field, Chris will be in the auditorium or checking out whatever it is, and come fall, Terrence will be in the booth doing the announcing, just like they always have and always will. And that's what makes this so great. Both of them have stepped to the plate in big, big ways. Rob's right. It is a big-time commitment. I don't think anybody really realizes how much time you put into this. People will see us, you know, enjoying concerts at Santa Fe with Dr. Z and his crowd or other open houses, and you're thinking, wow, this is kind of a sweet gig. You get free parking right in the front row, you know, and everybody's happy to see you. But you know, that's really not what the job is. And that is why it was so much fun to work with these group, this group of people, because everybody's focused in the same direction, which is to make the city and our schools better. It's been a blast working with you guys. And I'm not that sad, because I know we'll be working together again. I mean, that's the bottom line. The first time there's a question or problem, we know where to go, and there won't be any hesitation in us asking or them responding. So until the next time we see you, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, a lot.
Ed? And before we turn the microphone over, I'd like to say a few words on behalf of Cabinet. Chris, you were the board president when I was first hired here, six long years ago. And soon thereafter, you told me you were not going to run again. I tried not to take that personally, as I was looking forward to working with you, and I am delighted that I had this opportunity for the last few years. You've been extraordinary, and this board didn't miss a beat, because you were so well-informed about everything, and your insight and your commitment and your passion showed through everywhere. And so I was so grateful to you for being that first and am thankful that you were willing to come back for a couple of years. Terrence, you've been my board president now for the last year, and it has been a privilege. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your passion. If I didn't have an answer for you right away, I made sure to get it, because I knew that you were going to circle back. And so every one of us worked very hard to make sure that we responded, because we were going to make sure to meet the needs, because we knew that you were passionate, not just on behalf of our community, but on behalf of our students. And you were persistent with that. So thank you for your leadership, your friendship. This community, this district, has benefited from the cohesion of this board and the strength that each of you brought to it. And I am... We are better for having all of you here, and your contributions have truly made us a strong, thriving district. Thank you on behalf of a grateful cabinet for your expertise and your commitment to our students.
And I'm going to turn this over to Terrence to let him say a few words. But before I do, I think there's one thing that really hasn't been emphasized enough, and that's how important to Mr. Rich and Mr. Williams the students of this community are. Their service has been all about what's good, what's best for the student. Board members face a lot of different issues, a lot of different items, and they, along with the board and our leadership in the board, has been the first focus is, has to be, what's good for the students of Monrovia. And they've exemplified that in all they've done. So thank you, guys. Terrence, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ed, and thank you for all that you've said thus far. First of all, I just want to thank my wife, who's here, for dealing with this transition of five years. Actually, it's been 15 years. My wife challenged me at Plymouth to be in PTA, and I didn't want to do it. But anybody's mayor, you know the persuasions. And it was the best thing ever happened to me. You know, in a democracy, you know, you can fall short sometimes. And how you handle it is just as important as when you win. And my wife and I try to teach our children the same characteristics that our parents taught us, which is it's not about self-aggrandizing. It's about servicing for others. You know, the audacity to go home and sleep at night knowing that you helped somebody else. And that's what drives Terrence. You know, how we live daily is just as important as what type of accolades and honors are achieving we may ever achieve in life, you know? And as has been told, I will continue to work on behalf of the Monrovia Unified School District in different capacities that I've been serving for the last 10 years, and I want to still do that if they will receive me like football boys. I'm a proud Monrovia, and I prayed that the board has received me, and I left it better than when I arrived, which was still a great board. I've been blessed and had the privilege to be a board member for five years. I've been blessed to be a president this year. I was blessed to give two of my kiddos diplomas. My daughter Audrey, who was in Category One Drill Team, and of course, my son, Special Need, Sam. I don't like to say that public, but it is what it is, and we love him. And he's a shining star in our house on most occasions. Yeah, I know you did, son. But I had the opportunity to represent on behalf of the unincorporated Monrovia area. And my focus when I first got here was for Plymouth and Santa Fe to be up par with all the other schools. That was the perception of the community in my neighborhood. Dr. Z and Dr. G has transitioned those two schools in ways that I would never dream of. And I can hold my head up high when I go to my own community, because they know that I was a part of that along with these other four board members. You know, now we all have the privilege to witness the diocese, you know, on TV now. If you didn't know, before I arrived, we did not... My wife and I couldn't see the diocese, because we lived in an incorporated area. You know, my son played in the championship football game. I'll never forget that. And my wife, and they couldn't see him at home. And so the board got together with me, and we made some changes for the better. Now, as far as the board, and let me just take my time, please, because this is be my last hurrah. But, you know, the audacity to get along. I want to say this to all of you, and that's what it is, the audacity to get along. I didn't want any who shot J.R. and who was mad at who. I didn't give a hoot about that. I was only concerned about what's for the betterment of Monrovia. When I met Rob Hammond and talked to him about my passion to run, I was intimidated, because I saw the likes of Ed Gilliland, who I think is a giant. I saw Brian Wong articulating the numbers. But my wife and my family encouraged me, because my passion for kiddos. Rob Hammond, you've been a friend and a brother. Perception's not reality, folks. It would behoove you not to receive people based on your own experience. And I'm so glad I have the nerve to receive you, Rob, based on my own experience, and it's been a privilege and an honor to be your friend and all the things you've done for the city of Monrovia that a lot of people don't even know. Brian Wong, he was my first mentor. He told me what not to say. Don't say that, T. No, T, that's not a good idea, T. And I had a lot of questions, and I want to say that to you, Celine, and to Maritza. Don't be afraid to ask. You will not know it all. Alexander Zuko told me that. "T, you're not going to know what you're doing and what you're talking about for two years." I'm like, girl, please. It was two and a half years. And so with that said, I welcome you openly, because it's all about Monrovia. Everything before this is under the bridge. It's all about Monrovia and get along with these guys. Ed Gilliland, before I became a board member, I didn't think a board member should be on the board unless they had children. I'm from the south. We say children, children, rather. Until I met you, Ed, and your passion, and your bigger-than-life character, your integrity, and the fact you were a Christian, that motivated me, because I was one too. Chris, you're still the smoothest board member I will ever meet. Your demeanor, I've never seen you lose your cool. I can say that publicly, except in the back of the boardroom. No, seriously. And Ed said it right. You're an asset to our district, you know, what you do, and you don't even say hello. You just do it, man. Sometimes you don't even know Chris is out there, till you stare, and he's out there. You know, and so I thank you for that. I thank you for all the help in the booth for the last few years. Brian and I can sound better now. Captain Terosian, I think you are the epitome of a superintendent. You're smart. You're intelligent. You're sharp. You're fantastic. And most of all, I love your humor. And then there's more. Dr. Kaiser is one of, if not the smartest person in the school district in all I've ever seen. The way you articulate, Doc, I would purposely ask you to do things. I say, you talk. She knows that, too. I got 13 teachers in my family, and I've never seen someone with the likes of you. Dr. Jackson, you graduated two of my kids. I had a picture. I wanted to show everybody what my kids are doing now. Doc was in charge of... My daughter was a band member, a proud band member. 2011, Dr. Jackson was there. I was happy to sit on the Wallace Committee for you and do those things as a PTA parent. My son, Luke, thank you for seeing him last week. That meant so much to him. Luke graduated from UC Davis, first-time CF champion in football. I cried the whole time. And thank you for allowing me to announce that game, man. And those who were there with me, they knew I was crying the whole time I was announcing. Connie Wu, I'm going to say this publicly. I was impressed by your resume before I knew what you did when you got here. I was impressed by the respect that you demand in the Asian community. I was impressed how you were the blueprint that cemented our trip to get international students and allowed me to take that trip to China, along with Brian and Kurt McGinnis. I was impressed how you do your numbers. You're the sharpest number woman I ever met with the money. You really are. And so this district is blessed to have you. Charles, you're the tech master. My suggestion to you is just keep moving and keep up with the times, because it's changing. Before you know it, we're not going to be using phones. We're going to be using whatever. But Shashana, I think you are so sharp. You're so intelligent. You're so professional. You're so beautiful. And it's been just a true honor to work with you. A lot of the things that I say, folks, it ain't my words, okay? But I want to thank you publicly, and I wish you luck in anything you do. And you can tell Brother Man I say hello, too. And that's it. I don't want to keep it long. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. I am a good person right now by being on the board for five years. I'm not walking away bitter. I'm happy, man. I'm blessed. And I'll still be serving this community. May God bless you all.
Want to get a picture of her? Let's get one.
And with that, we'll take a short recess to have some cake and celebrate these two and change the board over. We'll reconvene in ten minutes or so. All right, I see Ms. Huff successfully made that copy and is back, and Mr. Williams turned the meeting over to the vice president, and so, without adjourning the open session, we will convene the Board of Education organizational meeting, and that's on a separate agenda if you're trying to follow us on the agenda. I call that meeting to order at eight thirty-six. And the roll call will show that all present members, electees, cabinet are present. And with that, I would call Maritza Travanti to the podium, and Dr. Terosian, would you please administer the oath of office to Board Member Travanti?
Ms. Travanti, you'll follow me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Maritza Travanti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will mentally reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Travanti.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Gilliland, esteemed board members, Superintendent Dr. Terosian, cabinet members, and the community of Monrovia. Thank you all for the privilege of being here tonight. I'm truly excited to get started for the betterment of our schools, our students, and our teachers. I'd like to thank everyone who voted and supported me for the entire campaign, but most especially my husband Neil Travanti and daughter Alexis Travanti. If you could please stand. I couldn't have done this without their relentless support. My friend Gina Ammon, she stepped up and did an exceptional job as my campaign manager. Gina, please stand. Thank you. And thank you for having confidence in me and not looking at me like I was crazy. And thank you to so many friends and their kids playing a critical role in my campaign. They were truly my biggest cheerleaders, and I do believe we have some aspiring politicians among them. To the community of Monrovia, I am ready to roll up my sleeves and begin the important work the Monrovia School Board does.
As you heard throughout my campaign, I have several action items I will be tasking the district with. Tonight, I will be introducing my first item in new business, and that will be to put in place an annual State of the District address, which will go a long way in bringing transparency to the community while highlighting the great things that are happening with our schools, and an opportunity to be honest and open with our constituents regarding the challenges the district is facing. I feel very strongly about this and know that my new colleagues will jump on board. I'm also looking forward to continued engagement with parents, teachers, and the community stakeholders to put Monrovia on the map as a place to get a great education. We have great schools, we have great teachers, and we have great administrators. Now, let's work together and take it to the next level. Thank you.
Ms. Travanti, if you'd take this seat right here. And Dr. Terosian, would you administer the oath of office to Celine Lockerbie? We're going to do musical chairs here.
Thank you. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Celine Lockerbie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Good evening. Wow. Thank you all for being here tonight. There are a great many people that I would like to thank for helping me come to this position of service. I'm not going to spend your time tonight thanking them all, but if you will allow me, there are a few acknowledgements that I would like to make. To Girl Scout Troop 2851. Thank you for giving me the time off to allow me to campaign. To all of the candidates, putting yourself out into the community and asking for help and asking for support and asking for money and asking to put a sign in your yard, it's difficult. Terrence Williams and Christian Holt wished to serve, and their efforts are to be commended. To my husband and children, I want to say thank you for the sacrifices that you made while I was campaigning and the sacrifices that you will continue to make, and for all of your support. I have it written down here in case I forgot to say I love you. I love you. Now, there are some things that I need from all of you. I ask for all of you to be patient with me while I learn and grow in this new position of service. I'm sure I will make some mistakes. Please bear with me and understand that I will always try my best, and I am always here to listen. Finally, I need from all of you to be outraged. I need for you to be outraged at how underfunded public education is in the state of California. California is the fifth-largest economy in the world, yet our schools are funded forty-first in the nation. I need your outrage to be peaceful and polite and professional. I need you to be informed, inspired, and innovative. I need you all to understand that this board and this district are advocates constantly for greater funding for the state of California, and also our local representatives like Judy Chu, Anthony Portantino, Chris Holden, Grace Napolitano, Catherine Barger, Holly Mitchell, but we're still underfunded. I am here, we are here, for Georgie and Evelyn and Grace and Lexi and Desmond and Zoe and Isabella and Sophia and Sophia. We are here for all of the children. But if we don't get the money that we need, we can't meet our utmost potential. This district is great, and it can be even better. So, I ask you not to be silent, sign the petitions, write to your representatives, and vote. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. I appreciate all of your time.
Okay, Ms. Lockerbie, if you would step out front, I think the new board should get our picture together, and then with all the staff to kick off the new.
Congratulations.
All right, here in the Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education. All right, I would ask cabinet and superintendent to join us as the leadership team of our district.
The last tall, the last tall people.
Celine?
Yes?
Would you like to take that part?
No, no, no. No, that's me, right? That's Bertha.
Okay, whatever, right?
Bertha takes Brian's spot, and Celine takes Chris's. Do you know if this is my bottle of water?
If it's not open, this one's mine. This one's yours, this one's mine.
Hardest decision we have to make all night. What bottle of water is mine? The shifting of seats. All right, so for the next part of the organizational meeting, we need to appoint a chairperson pro tem, and I propose we appoint Dr. Terosian. Is there any problem with that?
Nope.
Hearing none, Dr. T, would you take over this part of the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. We are at a point in our agenda when we need to elect the officers of the Board of Education. Do I have any nominees for president?
I nominate Mr. Gilliland.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Gilliland.
Thank you.
President Gilliland. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Rob Hammond.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Vice President Hammond. Do we have any nominations for clerk?
I will nominate Mr. Wong as clerk of the board.
I will second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Two times.
Congratulations, Mr. Wong.
Oh, thank you. I'm very honored.
Nominations for secretary?
I nominate Dr. Terosian.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wong.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Terosian. We have an opportunity to elect a member of the board to represent the district in the election of members to the County Committee on School District Organization in 2018-2019. Do I have any nominees?
Can we nominate you? Board members to represent? No, we can't.
This is a county committee on school district reorganization. They're the ones that would hear any proposed change to district boundaries, et cetera. And at this point in time, I don't know that we necessarily need that representative, so my proposal would be not to appoint this position at this time.
We've done this. I know this is a position I've had a number of times. It's come up once or twice with the Arcadia Boundary Area, so that is probable that it would come back. I don't have a problem doing it again.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Since you offered, I will nominate.
I'll second it. And quick, let's vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Wong.
We can redo that vote if you like.
I need a motion to authorize the signature certification for the Los Angeles County Office of Education for the period of December 12, 2018, through December 11, 2019.
So moved.
Second. This one has to be a roll call.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Appoint a member of the board as the representative for the 2018-2019 negotiation of the superintendent's contract and compensation as directed by the board, and also to serve as the liaison to the superintendent's department and liaison committee.
Nominate Mr. Gilliland.
Second.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution for payment of board members pursuant to Education Code Section 35120?
So moved.
Second.
Board Member Lockerbie? Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have an opportunity, designate a representative to the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association for 2018-2019.
I've been that representative for several years and I've, and there was a purpose for that because a lot of the representatives there were instrumental in some of the hearings that we needed. However, at this point in time, basically, you go to a dinner once every three months and I, you know, if somebody wants to do it, great. If we don't have a representative, if we don't have a volunteer, I suggest we not have a representative. If you'd like to go to Downey to dinner, that's, you know, we'll gladly let you.
Boy, the way you paint that picture, Ed.
Let me get a call from Downey.
Well, you get to talk to a lot of board members.
There's the engineer for you.
I gotta tell you, I'm not really trying to talk anybody into doing this one, so.
We can postpone that.
Okay. Designate a board liaison to each of the following departments: Business Services, Education Services, Human Resources, and Technology. We'll just take volunteers from the board.
If I may, we're working on some policies right now that are on educational services and I'd like to be able to continue that and finish them off and bring them to the board if it's with the board to issues.
Everybody okay with that?
Fine.
Human Resources? Business Services or Technology?
Dr. Terosian, I would suggest you appoint people to save some time.
Mr. Wong, would you like to?
Yes?
How about if I ask our newest board members if they have a preference? Ms. Travanti, do you have a preference between the remaining departments?
Human Resources, please.
Okay. And Ms. Lockerbie?
Could I be a co liaison to Educational Services with Mr. Hammond?
We really try to have one representative for each department because of the way the liaison works and so.
It doesn't preclude you from working with them.
Yeah.
But this is more, much more of a functional role, so the person knows who to talk to when they're reviewing policies.
So, the answer is yes, and what other committee would, I mean, what other liaison role?
What is, what is still available?
Technology and Business Services.
How about Business Services?
Of course. And congratulations, Mr. Wong, you will be working with Technology.
Winner!
There was a request to, we also could use a representative, and this would be new to our liaisons, to work with our lobbyist. It would be nice to have somebody, a member of the board.
I want to do that. Can I, can I take, can I take myself off of business and work with the lobbyist? Or is it?
You could do both. This is a new one. We have to have one person that does two.
Yep.
I'd like to work with the lobbyist, please.
Do you want to work? I, I don't know how to do this. Rob has worked with, or helped pick our lobbyists in the past. Since this isn't an official function, or we haven't done this.
I don't think that it mattered, the two board members. We, okay, here's the, here's the issue, okay? You and I can meet with them, but we would not be able to discuss anything with them.
Because we've already, we're talking to each other.
And it will come to the board for a vote.
All right, I would suggest, since it's not on the agenda, that we can bring this back at a later point in time and you guys can work out how we're gonna do it. Does that work for you, Ed?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, but you two could talk about it and then bring it to the board in open, but it would have to be come back in open session, yes. As it would.
Anyway.
Anyway, so.
To designees from the board to participate in the planning committees for the development or revision of the strategic plan and the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Any volunteers?
I've done it for the last two years. It's like going to Downey.
Well, it's a, it's a really critical role and I think you learn a lot about the district, so I would propose that. Mr. Travanti?
I'll go ahead and step up for the all cap.
Okay. We could just.
Okay, for continuity, I'll do it again.
Yeah, that sounds.
And we have several community meetings and to have a representative at each of these, we have the Chamber of Government Affairs. Do we have a volunteer for that?
Can you explain further what that means, what they do at Chamber Government Affairs, Chamber Board of Directors, Coordinating Council, and Monrovia Association of Fine Arts? That, that one kind of explains itself.
The Chamber of Government Affairs is a group of people who meet and from each level of government. And the discussion is, are we getting our information out? Are we getting information back from them? The meeting, I haven't been on this in years. Is it once a month? I think it's once a month.
I believe so, yes.
And it's usually in the afternoon at about 4:30 or so, I think.
And the Chamber Board of Directors, that explains itself?
Yes.
Coordinating Council, what is that?
That's where you meet early in the morning and you introduce to them all the events that are happening in Monrovia schools. And there's a great big, huge community calendar that goes on to avoiding conflicts and things like that. I believe it still meets
Yeah, it meets at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM or something like that. The first or second Monday of the month. I would, I would take that one. Coordinating Council is all the nonprofits and organizations around the city meet to basically coordinate calendars and discuss what all's going on in the different organizations.
You know what, I would suggest that we table this and then we can talk about it and figure out what it is when everybody has a clear understanding what the roles are. So, if we can just bring this back as well, please.
So, table 2.3 until January?
Please.
Okay, sounds good to me. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
With that, then we will adjourn the Board of Education Organization meeting and reconvene the Board of Education Open Session Meeting. We'll start out with just a completion of the comments. I believe there was, you want to put the signs up? Okay, we'll, we'll complete that by putting the appropriate signs up.
Appropriate signs.
So, I will have a sign that says president and Rob will have a sign that says vice president and Mr. Wong is now the clerk. Thank you. I think.
You win.
All right, we had one comment card that wasn't able to speak because there weren't too many people in here when we called it. So, we'd like to go ahead and open the podium up for the item that's not on the agenda now. Being an item that's not on the agenda, we can't not discuss it. By law, we can't discuss it, but we always welcome input from, from those that have input, so we would.
Yes, Board President Gilliland, excuse me, have it. I'd like to invite Kevin and Darla Sales to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the time to speak to you today. We wanted to come speak because, and I'll be brief because I know it's late, so I'm gonna get right to the point. We wanted to speak to the board and have some comments heard because we've found some very shocking information in one of our students' classrooms. So, after hearing complaints from our son about nothing happening in this class, we, you know, we were like, yeah, right, he's just saying that he's a 14-year-old, it's probably not the case. And by the way, just to give you some background, I've lived in Monrovia for 21 years. My oldest son, who's 29, went to Monroe, Santa Fe, and Monrovia High School, graduated there. We have three other boys, one junior at the high school, he went to Brad Oaks, Santa Fe, and he's at Monrovia. Freshman, Brad Oaks, Santa Fe, and then now we have a sixth grader who has gone to Brad Oaks. He's about 23, he thinks anyway, but he's a sixth grader. He went to Brad Oaks and now he's at Santa Fe. But getting back to the point, so the, the class is Introduction to IT. My son is in the MASA program. He is sharp with technology and sharp with engineering, and so this was gonna be a great thing for him going forward. And after hearing numerous complaints about there being nothing happening in this classroom, we decided we've got to go see for ourselves. Not only did my wife go the first time, there were one or two other parents that went as well because the constant reports from the children is that nothing was happening in this classroom. My wife went there, arrived about, the first time, arrived about 12 minutes after class started. About 10 minutes after that, the teacher happened to notice that there was someone in the room stirred and started the class session. Thinking this was a one-time thing, she went back again. Same thing. I was there last week Friday because, again, I'm shocked. I'm like, this can't be what's really happening every time that we go to the class, and the same thing happened again. So, I'm gonna give you some detailed information, but each of those three times, it, there was really nothing that went on in the entire class situation. And if you don't know what goes on with the students nowadays, my two children that are in high school, both will have to take college courses prior to graduating from high school in order to get accepted to the schools they want to go to. There, when I was in school, you know, when you're a senior, you had fourth period and that was the end of the day. You went home around 1 o'clock. That is not the case anymore for these students. There's so much pressure and so much extra work that they have to do that I cannot have my son's time wasted during the day. It's, it's not appropriate for our students. So, all three times we went, there was nothing going on. All three times, he talked, and we think for the benefit of the parent, about a certification that's available, about how much money the students can make, and about if you pass this test, you'll be able to make money. This is something that you cover in the introduction day one in the class and on the last day, and that's it. But it was covered all three times that we attended. Really shocked to see that. The first two times, my wife, who was there, could not figure out what they were supposed to be doing. She has a degree from Michigan State University. She's not 14 years old and she could not figure out what they were supposed to be doing during the class time. That, to me, sounds very odd. She asked, can I see your syllabus? He was told, there isn't really official one, I'll get it to you later. He sent her an email, said, I'll get it to you later. We're changing the program, so we'll have the syllabus later. When I went last Friday, the entire class period, there was a five-minute assignment. My son did that assignment three times because he was turning it in the wrong way technology-wise, so the teacher didn't get it the first two times. He did it three times during the class period, and that was maybe 15 minutes worth of work. The entire rest of the period, there was nothing else going on. And I timed it because it was very important to me. I'm gonna give you the details of what happened in the class when I was there. So, I arrived at 8:12. A few minutes after I arrived, the teacher stood up and actually started the class. Class starts at 8 o'clock or something like this, 7:55, whenever it is. I arrived at 8:12, didn't start till after I got there. I'm gonna give you the details of what I saw. So, first of all, there are 24 Mac PCs there. The Mac is a very tall computer. I cannot imagine being a teacher in this classroom and having my desk in the front where I cannot see the students. When I went in as an observer, I sat in the back purposefully so I could see what every student was doing on their computer. One person was sleeping. Let me take that back. He was resting with his head down. I don't know for sure if he was asleep or not, but his head was down for the first 25 minutes of class. He lifted his head, watched YouTube videos that have nothing to do with computer programming for about 15 minutes, then he went back to resting. One person was on the phone until 8:27 on his cellphone. One person was playing until 8:25 on the computer. One person who came in at 8:18, now there's 24 computers in the room. One student sat on the other side of a barrier with no computer in front of him the entire class, both times my wife was there and when I was there. One person was playing and then stopped playing on the computer and went on YouTube. I wrote down one person was working until 8:25 and then on their phone the rest of the day. I was actually wrong. When I, I was sitting at an angle where I couldn't see their computer. What I thought was work on their computer, I found out later from watching another student who was on theirs and hearing this teacher talk to that student, that that's a game that they learned about in junior high school that they play. It looked like it could have been computer stuff, but it's actually a game where you're moving blocks. So, he was playing a game until 8:25 and it was on his phone for the rest of the period. The student that came in at 8:18 sat where there's, the desks are set up where there's two desks and two computers, and it's every two, so two students sitting next to each other. The person that came in at 8:18 sat down in between those two students, so he did not have his own computer. Those students didn't do any work. The one on the left did no work at all the entire class time. I could see his computer. The one on the right did something that he printed a certificate and turned that in, so it was some sort of classwork that took him maybe five minutes at the most. The rest of the time, he was watching YouTube videos. The person in front of them watched YouTube videos the entire class period. And I'm not talking about YouTube videos about computer programming or anything about computers. It was car racing videos. It was YouTube videos from someone who played Fortnite and posted those videos. The teacher walked over to that student and said, is there anything exciting today? Looking at his screen, watching him watch a car racing video, people drag racing on, on YouTube. And the teacher's comment was, is there anything exciting today? I was just shocked. I almost fell on the floor. The last person that I counted that I knew what they were doing watched YouTube videos the entire class time. When the teacher, teacher came over to them, he turned off the YouTube video, went to the assignment. The second the teacher walked away, went back to the YouTube video. So, as I can see it, there were five minutes worth of work. I watched the assignment, me not knowing anything about what they're doing in class. I cannot imagine that assignment taking me more than four minutes. It was click here, pull the drop down, click there, click there, and then submit that to me online. It was ridiculous. So, as I can see it, the majority of the class did absolutely nothing. I could see exactly what eight of the people were doing. There's about 14 people in the class. I could see what eight of them were doing, which was nothing. Three, I suspected, did nothing and three did the five, five minutes worth of work. I don't understand how that is the way the classroom goes. What bothered me most is that the Mac computers that are in this room are very expensive. There's 24 of them on desks and one at the teacher's computer. It's the biggest waste of resources that I have seen. And again, I go back to what I said in the beginning. My son does not, he's gonna be taking a class at a junior college before he graduates, probably three to four as recommended by the person we've had to hire to get him in the school we want him to go to. He does not have a semester to waste in school doing nothing, nothing. I can't imagine, I can't, my son is 17. He got a phone for his birthday last week on December 3rd. So, he did not have a phone. His two brothers do not have a phone. That's how we are about having phones. I cannot imagine how a teacher is teaching in class not caring that students are on their phone the entire class period or half of the class period. I do not understand this at all. Like I mentioned, the two times my wife was there, she could not figure out what the assignment was. And I went and I was able to figure out. So, I have an update because that was Friday. Maybe things have changed. Monday, they were assigned a five-minute video to watch. My son watched that video and he had an assignment that took him 15 to 20 minutes. The class is roughly an hour. He had 25 minutes worth of work. Tuesday, the teacher was two minutes late to class. They were standing outside for two minutes after the bell rang. I cannot imagine that. I do not understand how that is acceptable anywhere in any job for anything. My dad was in the military. He was late if he was 10 minutes early. I cannot understand how a teacher was not on time to his class. Maybe it was a one-time thing, so I asked my son and he said, most of the time he's on time, but sometimes he's late. He relat, he does not start the class before 8:10 or 8:15. My wife was in the class twice and I was there once, and the class had not started before either of us got there either time.
Sir, we normally limit comments to five minutes.
I'll be done in 30 seconds.
I just wanted to see if you were about done.
I'm just about done, maybe not 30 seconds, but about a minute.
We don't want to hear you, just we need to.
Okay, cool. At 8:15 on Tuesday, he told them to watch a 15-minute video and they could do whatever they want after that. On Wednesday, at 8:10, he started the class. He told them to go to something called Open Edge or Open EDG. I'm not sure what that was. It wasn't working on the computer, so he said, I'll have to figure that out and, and we'll get that figured out and work on that tomorrow. Nothing's going on in the class. This is a computer class where our kids should come out being able to do something out of that class, and there's no results. So, my question is, what are the key performance indicators on this class? What, what, what are we measuring in this class? What is it that we expect the students to achieve? When my wife went both times, there was no syllabus. He emailed saying that there'll be a syllabus when he changes what they're going over. There is a, a list of assignments now on the website, but I don't see how there is a clear concise goal. My question is, what are the key performance indicators that we're measuring on this program, on our computer training for our children? I would like, I would like to formally request that the school board address this question at the meeting on January 23rd, add this to the agenda under new business, and I would like to, to get a better understanding of what are the key performing, performance indicators? indicators of this program and any other program that we have at our school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll take that under advisement. I, I do have one clarification question.
Sure.
Like I say, we can't really discuss it here tonight. Have you talked to the principal of the school?
I sent an email.
Did you talk?
I, I've talked to the principal.
Okay. Then would you guys make sure that Dr. Therosian has your contact information?
Absolutely.
And she'll be talking to you folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. All right. Then we will move on to communications. Any board member report? Hearing none, we'll move on. Well, we already had a student board member report. We'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Therosian.
Well, first I'd like to thank the various teams who presented at the California School Board Association. We really were well represented there. And it was some valuable information that we were able to bring back. Of course, Board President Williams at the time, helped present with AB288. And I'll be following up with some information about sling, what were they called, Mr. Puvakin? Those sling packs for the videos?
They're called sling boxes and they are primarily meant to be a, a video streaming kit in a box that you can carry with you and wirelessly stream events.
So Mr. Rich was very excited about the, the possibilities that that opened up for us, so we are looking forward to exploring those. I want to commend the staff of, sorry, not the staff, the performers in Annie. And we have in the audience, Mr. Garcia, as well as Mr. Luhon, who was really just a star in that show. And thank you, Mr. Travanti, for sharing Sunny with us. And beginning tomorrow evening and this weekend is Almost May, the production, the play production at the high school for the, the winter production. I encourage you to go. I'm looking forward to it.
All right. We'll move on. We'll move on to item L, informational report on performing arts. Patrick Garcia.
Hey, everybody. It's nice to see you. It's been quite a meeting tonight. Okay. So I'm delighted to be here tonight to talk to you about celebrating the arts and to provide the board with an overview of the Taylor Performing Arts Center productions and our gala for 2018. So as you can see here, these are the 12 productions that we have produced over the last six years. This is the end of our sixth season, believe it or not. And I wanted to share just a couple of quick facts. First of all, we've had over 100 of our MUSD students perform in these professional productions on the stage with industry professionals, which I think is pretty great. Also, we've had over 100 of our students having the opportunity to work backstage with professional lighting designers, professional sound designers, and the like. That's been pretty awesome as well. And then in terms of community volunteerism, for every show, we have approximately 65 community volunteers who come out and help us with front of house, which is fantastic. And so all told, in terms of audience, we've had over 20,000 people come to see these last 12 productions. So we're, we're very excited about that. All right. Moving on. So I wanted to share our budget for 2018. And so the amount that you see there, the $431, that was our positive amount left after we closed out Beauty and the Beast. And so I know many of you had the opportunity to attend our gala last year, Dream with Us, at the home of Judy and Tody SarSam. That was on St. Patrick's Day on March 17th last year. And so I brought the beginning balance forward and then you can see that we had our revenue from the gala as well as $7,113.58 worth of expenses for an ending balance of $36,727.42. So we move from there to Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And just a, a quick note there, we had 20 of our MUSD students that participated in the production onstage for Joseph, as well as 10 of our students that helped backstage. And Paul David Bryant, our director, was from Disney for that production. So we brought our balance forward here and so we have revenue. And the revenue here consists of ticket sales, ad sales, donations for expenses. We have expenses for sets, costumes, labor, and orchestra. That left us with an ending balance of $12,775.10. Moving into Annie, which was the show that just closed on Sunday. And so we were delighted that we had 16 of our MUSD students in Annie on the stage and 10 of our MUSD students helping backstage. And Keely Milliken was the director of that particular show. So we moved our beginning balance forward here. And again, revenue for our show was ticket sales, ads, and donations. And then expenses were sets, costumes, labor, and orchestra. We had an ending deficit there of $4,668.47. So now we move to the preview for the 2019 gala. And so we've got our beginning balance there. We've already had four patrons provide us with revenue for the gala, so that brings us $10,000. There have been no expenses thus far. And so as of Monday, December 10th, we have a balance of $5,331.53. And we're very excited that we are going to have our summer production be Mary Poppins this year. We thought with all of the hoopla with the Disney production coming up over the Christmas holidays, that it might be a great time to do that. And Mary Poppins will fly, so that's going to be fun. And that will be on July 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th for 2019. And that is my report. So if there are any questions, I'd be more, more than happy to answer.
When's the next gala?
Uh, March 15th.
March 15th.
Yes. Friday, March 15th. And this particular year, it's going to be at the Doubletree.
And so we would like everybody to mark that date on their calendar now so they can attend that gala on March 15th.
Yes.
Are there any questions for Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I have a question. All of this money that you're talking about, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
What fund, what department is it going in and out of? Is it going out of a district department?
So, um...
Or versus a community or department?
Right. So all of our funds come out of the Business Services, so all of the checks get written to Monrovia Unified School District. And within the Business Services Department, there is a theater donation account. And so all of the funds for the show and all of the funds for our donations go specifically into our theater donations account.
Thank you.
Yeah. Of course.
I was in The King and I.
You were!
Thought I'd mention that.
Any, anything else? I just, I also want to say that, you know, from the bottom of my heart, this board is so supportive of the arts and you guys show up for all these events. You are incredibly supportive and passionate and I really appreciate that. I, I feel like there is so much support coming from the board. It was wonderful. I was nervous that I was going to forget everybody's name, but it was so wonderful to have so many of you there on opening night to support the opening night of Annie. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership, Mr. Garcia. This is a wonderful program to do two things. Give our students an opportunity to participate in a professional production.
Yes.
And two is to give some exposure to our students to professional theater and stir up the interest in, in the arts and theater. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I know it's expensive, Patrick, but having a live orchestra makes all the difference in the world.
Thank you. I agree. I think it just adds that vibrancy, doesn't it? When, when, when you have a canned orchestra, it's like it's never going to change. But a live orchestra, it's like they're, they're up there listening to the singers and it's happening right now.
And I do believe the gentleman that was playing drums was an MHS student.
Yes! Former MHS. Yes, he was. Yes.
I wanted to add something too, as, as kind of a behind-the-scenes participant. Those of you that don't know, my dog Sunny played the role of Sandy. And although he showed his backside quite a bit to the audience and didn't, didn't do exactly what he was supposed to do, he was still cute.
He was darling.
And it was great to be part of that process because I was able to see a lot of the kids in Monrovia participate along with the professionals and they learned so much and they looked up to them and it was a great experience for, for everybody. So I really appreciated it and being part of it too.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, and this report wouldn't be complete without a big shout out and thank you to all those patrons that donate and make this possible.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
All right.
All right. Moving along to consent agenda.
Move consent. Second.
Any questions coming?
Comment from Dr. Jackson, Board President Gilliland. Yes, I'd like to amend consent, consent agenda item number 10, specifically on the classified personnel assignments on page six under employments, number eight.
Wait, let me find it. Could you?
Page six.
Hang on. Please. I do. Oh, okay. I know what this is.
Okay. Specifically under hours, I would like to strike per day and add the word total so that it reads not to exceed 55 hours total, which you can't work 55 hours in a week.
That, that's a good correction.
Per day, rather. Sorry.
Any other comments or questions?
I will amend my, I will amend the motion with those notations.
I accept the amendment.
All right.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti? Board Member Lockerbie? Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. With that, we will move over to action items in Educational Services. Dr. Kaiser, would you explain the new course offering for high school students, Sports Medicine I?
Yes, and I'm wondering if we could take one and two together. They're contiguous. We have a, a career pathway at the high school that is comprised of Sports Medicine I and II right now. And this is a, a new pathway that is appropriate for students who want to go into the areas of physical therapy or even an entry into the medical fields. The Board of Education has requested to approve Sports Medicine I and II as new courses for the high school for grades 10 and 12. This course is an intensive study covering human anatomy and physiology by examining how systems of the body interact through normal activity, how the body responds to traumatic and injurious stimuli, and how an individual can change the outcomes of a situation by providing applicable hands-on skills. This, this is, has been studied greatly by our department, by our Director of, of Careers, Catherine Rial, in looking at the need for additional CTE pathways, Career Technical Education pathways. And the Department of Labor statistics indicate that there's a growing need for health careers. And there's no cost for this course. The materials will come from open source documents and the resources are, are all open source. And our, our teacher is a sports, he is a, a sports medicine trainer and his name is Kevin Mercado, who will be administering this, these courses.
Do we have any questions or comments on either Sports Medicine I or Sports Medicine II?
I have a question. Is the instructor, Kevin Mercado, is he already employed with the district? Is he already one of our teachers?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Thank you.
And he's working as our, our trainer for our athletes.
Any other questions, comments? Could I have a motion for item one or for item two there, the Sports Medicine I?
Move both.
You move both?
A second.
Second both. You're seconding both?
I second both.
Okay.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item three, new course offering for high school students, Human Genetics. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, this is another one of these courses that is in one of our most exciting programs, our early college program. And we plan to open the course for human genetics in the second semester of the high school. And the recommendations for the Board of Education to approve the human genetics as a new course offering for high school students as part of the MUSD early college program and in keeping with our local control accountability plan, goal 1.6, increasing higher, access to higher levels of courses to increase the number of students who successfully enter and complete high school, college, and career-ready and increase access for students to honors and AP level classes. This human genetics course is being presented to, for approval. This course satisfies the biological science group from the Intersegmental General Education Transfer Curriculum that we've learned to know as the acronym IGETSI. So you may hear that from time to time. IGETSI. And this is a, a term that is used by Citrus College that indicates the general education curriculum at the junior college level. This course is a, a science course that meets the needs for the IGETSI. It transfers to the UC and the Cal State system. However, it does not meet the A through G. They take a course in biology, the regular high school biology, that does meet the A through G requirements. And the reason that this doesn't meet the A through G as a science course is because it does not have a lab included in it. The courses that we offer at the high school through early college are non-lab courses. But this is part of the continuous curriculum that we are suggesting for our students who are in the early college courses.
Questions, comments? Ms. Hough, please take, oh, I guess we need a motion. So moved. Second. All right, Ms. Hough.
Board Member Lockerbie? Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item four, public review of recommended textbook. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, item four is the Board of Education has requested to accept for public review prior to the adoption of the following textbook for human genetics, Human Genetics Concepts and Applications by Ricky Lewis, 12th Edition. The human genetics covers the principles of genetics and reproduction and wellness and disease as applied, applied to humans. This book is the book that satisfies the course requirements for the human genetics course discussed in the previous board item. The budget implication is to, these textbooks have an approximate cost of $80 per student. The anticipated total cost will be $1,200. Half of the textbook cost will be paid by Citrus College and the other half, we will be utilizing the College Readiness Block Grant.
Are there any, well, questions, comments? No? Could I have a motion? So moved.
I'll second. Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. With that, item M3 has been moved to this point in the agenda, so going back to M3 All right, with that, item M3 has been moved to this point in the agenda, so go back to M3 as Individual Service Agreement.
Yes, Board President Gilliland.
Was moved off the Consent Agenda, which is M. It was Item Three under Consent Agenda, was moved to this location. Okay?
I'll be presenting that item. The Board of Education is requested to ratify individual service agreements for basic education, transportation, counseling, and physical therapy services for special education students by Rosemary Johnson, Dynamic Therapies, Hillside, Leroy Haynes, as detailed in the 2018-19 Individual Service Agreements Report Number Seven. The total estimated cost of these individual service agreements is approximately one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Are there questions or comments on this item?
I have some questions that I would like a breakdown of some of these costs. Perhaps here is not the time to do that. I would like to discuss with you just one item just right now while we're here. And I noticed that one of the items on the breakdown is the transportation cost for one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars for one student going to Canyon View School. Can you please explain what that cost is for, how it breaks down for us?
Yes, Canyon View School is one of the few non-public schools that provides transportation to students outside of their area. In this case, Monrovia would be considered outside the area because they're located in San Dimas. This is considered a nominal cost in comparison to some of the other private agencies that we utilize. Specifically, the cost normally range between seventy-five and a hundred dollars per day. So if we're in school a hundred and eighty days, you're looking at somewhere between thirteen thousand and eighteen thousand. So this, this cost is almost half of that. And we're continuing to look at ways to reduce the impact to our general fund.
And can you confirm, is this an annual cost? This is per year?
This is per year.
And this is one of those mandated costs under the Special Education laws and rules that when this program is needed by a special education student, we have to pay the transportation, correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Quick, quick question. Is there any issue or problem if we delay the vote on this particular action?
These payments have come due, and so there would be an issue with a delay in taking action. Yet the services are already being provided.
Do we currently have a contract with all of these particular vendors at this point in time?
We've had contracts with them over the years, yes.
So these, is this a request for a renewal or a ratification that there's been a change from our existing agreed-upon rate?
So specifically with, with Canyon View, the transportation cost was not available at the time. And so that's why it actually reflects amended. So now we're bringing forward that cost to add into the total cost.
If, if we waited until January to look at this matter again, would anybody that's giving service not be able to give us the service?
Mr. Hammond, may I ask you a question? I think we already provide a service. So services are already going on. So if during the course of the service, if we found, depending on the agreement, contract term, if we found another alternative with, with get a better price, then depending on the term, we may be able to terminate and pick up the new company to provide service.
I guess, no, no, my question is, if we do not take action on this tonight and we wait so that the questions that Board Member Lockerbie has can be satisfied and then bring it back, is there anything detrimental that's going to happen?
Will services be terminated?
Yeah, are they going to stop servicing us?
Based on my best knowledge, I don't think so because the service will be going on. The board just need to take action because without the board approval theoretically, there should not be service before whatever reason because of continuity of the students. So, so the, we are, service ongoing, but based on this item, there's changes. So if there are any changes, then board have to approve again. So, so Dr. Jackson probably came back the record to see the original contract when the board approval. So right now is ratify the changes.
So if we didn't ratify them tonight and we postpone this till the January ninth meeting, I believe it is, would?
Is this to ratify or to approve? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
This is ratify.
This was to ratify.
Well, if it's to ratify, it's already been done, so that's the answer.
It's already been done for, for this. Would we incur any interest expense, late payment fees, or a termination on their part?
I don't so think so. I think this is a procedure because by the etiquette, the board have to approve any business we're doing. The board have authority, we just execute the board's direction.
These folks are used to public contracts. This isn't their first rodeo. So I'll motion that we table this to the first meeting in January so Ms. Lockerbie can get the questions she has.
Second, I guess. I'm not sure that requires a second or not.
It shouldn't require a vote. We can just agree to table it.
Table, table, you're fine.
Is everybody okay with tabling this until January?
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you, yes.
So all the questions can be asked. And if all those questions are answered satisfactorily, can we bring that back on the consent agenda? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that, Ms. Lockerbie?
I am, thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to item O, oh, no. Oh, yes, it is. Oh, I'm sorry. We're convening another meeting without adjourning this one. And with that, we will convene the Annual Meeting of the Monrovia Unified School District Financing Corporation without adjourning the regular board meeting. Call that meeting to order at nine forty-one. Are there any public comments on the Finance Corporation? None. Designate the officers for that Financing Corporation pursuant to the bylaws, which would say the officers for the Finance Corporation are the same as those for the board with a few minor exceptions. And that would say that I would be the president, Rob would be the, or Mr. Hammond would be the vice president, Ms. Wu would be the chief financial officer, Mr. Wong would be the secretary, and Dr. Therosian will be the executive director of the finance. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, and we will move on to the Annual Report of the Corporation Activity.
Yes, Mr. President and the Board of Education, as in the annual meetings, we report to the board the activity. This is the district existing outstanding certificate of participation, which the district was issued back to nineteen ninety-seven for the construction project for the Mountain Avenue Building, which is currently hosting the Canyon Oak High School, Mountain Park Alternative Program, and the Monrovia Adult Education. So the original COP was issued for three point two million dollars. And back to twenty eleven, district will take advantage with, with the low interest rate and will refinance with interest rates for three point five percent, with the outstanding is two point phone, two point one million dollar. I would like to report to the board that because of this financing, we saved the district general fund for over six hundred thousand dollars. So for the seventeen eighteen school year, we, based on the COP payment schedule, the district paid a total of two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollar. And the, um, the NBRAS general funds paid seventy-three thousand, seventy-three thousand, eight dollar, eighteen dollar. And adult education paid one hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. In order to keep the accounting continuity, the two third of the payments still come from the adult education fund. But however, the district transferred the general fund money to the adult education. Basically, adult education pro, program, adult education program, their fund is state funding, they are not allowed to pay for the buildings. That's end my report.
Any questions, comments? All right, is there any other business for the Finance Corporation? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the Monrovia Unified School District Financing Corporation Annual Meeting. And with that, we'll take about a five or to ten minute recess and reconvene the open session when we come back. All right, we'll reconvene the open session. We'll recess the closed session and reconvene the open session. And moving along to the First Internment Report for two thousand eighteen nineteen. Ms. Wu.
Yes, President Gilliland, and tonight before the official board meeting, we conducted the study section for the district eighteen nineteen First Internment Report. And the district followed the state as well as the county of education guideline. And due to the revenue and the expanded changes and the decline, the percentage of unduplicate, uh, unduplicated students percentage as well as the increase of our personnel cost, we will self-qualify, submit a self-qualified certification as the, as the fact that on the district at the third year, we were able to have a positive any funding base. But unfortunately, we were not able to meet the three required, three percent required reserve for economic uncertainties. So we will go ahead and submit the report on time and then we will work on the plan to reduce the cost to make sure that when the district submit the second intern report for the board approval, then we will have a game plan.
All right, has anybody come up with any more questions since the study session you'd like Ms. Wu to address? Any comments? Move to approve.
I have one quick question I want to clarify. So as of right now, we are qualified. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Second.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item P six is Board Policy four one zero, Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities. Dr. Therosian.
Dr. Gilliland, I mean, Board President Gilliland.
All right, Dr. Jackson.
I have that one. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
The Board of Education is requested to receive for first reading Board Policy zero four one zero, Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities as recommended by the California School Board Association. This proposed revision of Board Policy zero four one zero, Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities brings this policy in alignment to recent changes in the law. Policy also adds language regarding the use of uniform complaint procedures, which we are currently updating as well, to investigate and resolve any allegation of unlawful discrimination. The California School Board Association has sample board policies which are available for district to use as a guide for their own policies. The proposed revisions to this Board Policy, uh, zero four one zero, Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities, align to recent changes in laws and reflects current CSBA language and has been reviewed with current Board President Ed Gilliland.
And I recommended the change of some of CSBA's language, specifically to take out the he, she item and put in there wording that reflected better grammar if nothing else.
You even had some changes up to yesterday.
So the board package that you got Friday had some things in there. We changed yesterday and you should have gotten an updated copy today. None of it was substantive, was purely wording and cleaning it up. So are there any questions or comments about that? So could we bring that back on Consent Agenda at the next meeting? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so we'll see that on the next agenda, on the next Consent Agenda. All business, the next regular board meetings are January the ninth, January twenty-third, and January thirteenth. All those meetings, the open session will start at seven. Chances are good we'll have either a study session or closed session beforehand. I'm sure we will on the ninth. Uh, new business, winter breaks. All sites are closed from the twenty-fourth to the January fourth. Martin Luther King Day, all sites are closed January twenty-first and the all staff in-service date will be January twenty-second, or twenty-eighth, when all sites will be closed. Is there any other new business?
Yes, President Gilliland, I wanted to bring up the State of the School Address that I mentioned earlier. So I'd like to have that added on, on the agenda next time around so we can discuss the logistics of, of getting that going here in the district.
Great, yeah, that's something we've had on our site for quite a long time and haven't pulled the trigger on it. So we'll put that on one of the, we'll look at the January agendas and put it hopefully on one of those two. But we'll get it on soon as it's possible. Any other new business? All right then, we will recess the open session and reconvene the Board of Education. But I just want to say before we go into closed session that tonight, when we do finally close, or tomorrow morning, whenever that is, I'm sorry. We're going to close this meeting in the memory of three members of the MUSD family that we've lost recently. First is Mary Ellen Stoller, the wife of Canyon Oaks High School, Mountain Park Librarian Bruce Stoller. Ms. Stoller, Stoller is a former librarian and she played a key role in creating the library at Canyon Oaks High School, Mountain Park School. She was integral in establishing Canyon Oaks Media Center Services, no, Media Center. The services for Ms. Stoller will be held tomorrow, December thirteenth, at Douglas Funeral Home at one PM. I'll just say she'll be sorely missed. Bruce and Mary Ellen have been stalwarts in this district and particularly recently in support of Canyon Oaks, Mountain Park. So we will miss her and our, our condolences go out to Bruce. Have we, have we sent a card? We, we should send a card to Bruce for that. All right, finally, we would like to close in honor of MHS senior Kelsey Mesa and her mother Cecilia Mesa, who we lost last week. Kelsey was a Monrovia Unified School District alum, attending both Brad Oaks and Monrovia Ultimateary Schools, then Santa Fe Middle School, and finally, Monrovia High School. Kelsey was described as a lovely student with a positive and caring personality who made a profound impact on her classmates and teachers. She was a member of the Monrovia High School Choir and was looking forward to graduating high school, having applied to five different colleges. She will be missed and I know many of our students and staff really feel the deep loss with, with that loss. So that's who will close the meeting in memory of when we close soon. So with that, we'll recess to closed session.